Good morning, everyone. Destination and signature events, events are happening again. That's the good news. Us and that delayed some things, but were gave us some great time to plan. It's moving along. The agenda for this presentation up here now from the tourist perspective, Robert will call it. Perspective shortly. We had a 2020 WIG or Signature Event Destination Event. We were also going to talk about Gilbert. Some rec. So. Talk about signature. We want to think about community, strong community. In those events that bring out the best of Gilbert, but our focus more on the resident side. We talk about destination events. We want folks coming in from. Side the community, whether it's Metro Phoenix, outside of. To Arizona, or even out of state visitors coming in. And overnight stays is a big. So just to kick it off, we'll. Tourism and give some background information and why a destination event. Bring some added. Talk about tourism, we talk about our audiences first and foremost. Have. Friends and relatives that visit from out of state. They're our largest visitor, family friendly community, and likewise, that's where we see the majority. We also are growing as a destination for youth and amateur sports. Pandemic, it was a key component of our visitation and keeping our hotels afloat and bringing. For those. And we've seen. Grow over. Cactus Yards, all that's been. At the other. Business travel. Steady visual side, right? That's her audience, but. Side as well as we get some of these large. Couple other audiences, the day visitors, so day visitation is huge for us. It's our makes up. Probably two, about two thirds of the total visitation to Gilbert. And so we have folks who come in, whether it's just from Metro Phoenix, or they're coming. To the valley outside of the state and then visit. As part of their. Also have Arizona event. So during that prime season here. Out for golf tournaments, runs, different things going on around the valley that are popular. See that visit. Spring training. Stadium. Many of them. States. Have to remind myself that we are a young line of service in Gilbert. And also a young industry, quickly growing industry within the town. This slide gives you. Market share within the Southeast Valley. Five percent of the overall. In the Southeast Valley, and you can see the. Breakouts there. Ended this slide a few years ago, we had three percent, so that is a. Percentage. So just looking at. The scale over time and the growth going back to 2012. That increased. Top blue line is by the available rooms and then the demand, the occupant. Big bump up in 2019. tells during that time period. And then another bump up in 2021, addition of the Holiday Inn Express out on Power Road. Dip there in 2020, obviously the industry major hit, but it's great to see that. Continuing to see that rebound. In. Better ideal. And how many visitors are coming over and what kind of impact they make. One of the things I study, other than the justification for audiences that we continue to heavily to. Standing up. About four million. Came. Just less than quarter of those stayed overnight. So. Economic impact numbers you'll see here are from Legislative District 12. State of Arizona reports these numbers by legislative district. That's the smallest we can get them from the state report. And that district happens to overlay. And clean fairly well. So that's where these numbers come from. And the slight bump up there about two and a half percent from 18 to 19, and then a drastic decline. I think this gives us perspective from the tourism side, because I think as a community, we weathered the storm pretty well. That break support, we saw. Sales tax revenues. Stay pretty strong. But we were missing a component. That was the visitor. And so there. It's also an opportunity as those visits. And then another thing that came. The visitor satisfaction, so we have 98% visitor satisfaction. To come in, see Gilbert for the first time and intend to really. Eighty-eight percent. Back in the next month and 93%. As I mentioned, a destination event. Focus, the major focuses are on stays. Bringing in that visitor spending, attributing that to the economy, but also representing Gilbert. And having something that the residents of Gilbert. Passionate about and aligns with values as well. Some objectives. Event. A trip visitor. Into the area. But also filling some of those available room nights, even though we have had one of the strongest markets on the hotel side. There's still room. Shoulder seasons, we sit at 70% occupancy, so you can see we have some flexibility to absorb. Months of October and January and. Bring that visitor spending, but not only from new visitors, but also visitors who come. Events as a whole, so as we have more events, signature and destination events, it just gives people more. So as they're coming in, it has the ability to increase their visitor, their daily spending. You would also extend their length of stay, so. Everything from the farmer's market to Gilbert Days and these community based events are still compelling reasons. To extend their stay. Whereas destination event were to. Create a case for them to. Form most. And then probably most importantly.
The the event should promote Gilbert's strong community and destination. So how do we, how do we get more destination events? There's two key ways that we found in our research and trends out there with other communities. First and foremost, and for the most part, in most communities and some of those large events you see. Across 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 different states. Is creating and fostering events, so a lot of events start as a grassroots effort, start as a community event and grow into a. Into a destination event and start bringing people into the community. So that's the primary way that that these events start. But there is also the opportunity to attract an event. There are events that are growing, they may outgrow their current place, they may have to move for another reason or are looking for a new home. And so there are opportunities to bring something that already attracts people into the community. And then as we have these events, we want to make sure that we're measuring them and understanding their impact in the community and their alignment with. Gilbert and the values of the community, so we're going to look at things like public safety, traffic, parking. Waste and refuge. The event operations as well as the event financials, so did the event bring in revenue and is it able to create economic impact in the community? Of course, the attendee satisfaction, is it something that people want to return to year after year? And then what is the resident sentiment and making sure that this event again aligned with what the values are for the community?
All right, thanks. Glenn Glenn's a little bit taller than I am, so give me a second. Not too hard. All right, so Glenn started us off with the tourism side, one thing I'm going to say is. On the Parks and Recreation side, we've seen a lot of changes over the past, you know, few years and. It's definitely been a time of tremendous growth, but also that partnership, so with economic development, this has been a partnership that we've been working together over the last two and three years. To focus on these core audiences and see how we can utilize the strengths of both teams to push, you know, items like the Destination and Signature Event. So to start us off a little bit, we're going to focus in on three key areas within Parks and Recreation in this, in this, you know, venue. Sports tourism being one. Events and then where we are today, the Repair and Preserve also plays a really large driver into the tourism within Gilbert. We're going to start off on sports tourism though. On Cactus Yards, definitely been a tremendous facility for the community. We did a study with ASU in 2019. And keep in mind, this is for the weekend visitors. Just as a reminder, the weekend really serves as that private promoter tournament, it's driving people to Gilbert weekdays as more community based. 2019, we were only open for about. Forty of the weeks, so it was a shortened year, but saw about 127,000 daily visits by tournament participants. And we were estimating about 98,000 for non tournaments. Couple of key stats, about 1,900 room nights generated in 2019, and as you saw in Glenn's presentation, that wasn't necessarily that we couldn't have had more. It's just that there weren't that many available, or we're right on that border between Mesa and Chandler, and these tournaments are sometimes spread out throughout the region, and so they're staying in different, different spots, but. We do feel that. There is a large driver for those room nights within Gilbert on those weekends. About 2.9 million in direct spending just in 2019. And then about 4.4 overall. We are now at the point where these tournaments are happening, you know, every weekend throughout the year, and we're working on updating those numbers for 2021, 2022. So this number, I think you're going to see a great increase in as well, because what we've noticed and what we've found is that. When we first opened up, we may have had one or two requests, you know, for the weekends, we're now averaging three requests for every booking period. So we have 52 booking periods, so we are telling a lot more organizations no. Then we are saying yes, it's something we don't like to do, but that's just sort of the, the case right now, and I think what's interesting is the demographics behind that. When we first opened up, you saw a lot more regional Arizona type items, which there still are. But we're also seeing a large increase in the amount of national tournaments coming, so. We feel really safe in saying Cactus Yards has kind of surpassed that local stage and is now at that national stage, but I think you're going to see more and more of. And one of the other questions we get a lot is what's, what's legacy going to do to that? Because a lot of us have heard of the 400 acre Legacy Park that's going to be opening up next year. And it's really not going to provide much difference. And one thing I'll say is it's actually probably going to drive more national attraction type tournaments to the valley. Because. We're still averaging three events per booking period. And we're just going to see that continue to expand, so whereas. The valley overall, when you think of Mesa, Gilbert, Chandler, this entire region is going to see those national tournaments come online, much as you've seen in places like Orlando and California. So that's an important development here that's happening. We also have an eight acre parcel that we've considered for a future hotel RFP right in the front of Cactus Yards, given the. Need for additional hotels within Gilbert and that attraction of increasing the nights that are happening in town. An example of this, this is one that's coming online this summer, this was a partnership between Parks and Recreation Economic Development at the Ripken Tournament. Ripken, obviously for the baseball fans, Terry's a heavy name. This is one of the largest tournaments and largest sort of tournament providers on the East Coast, and they're starting to venturing out west. And so when they started to venture out west, Economic Development and Parks and Rec put in an RFP to host that tournament. As you saw Glenn talk about wanting to increase the shoulder seasons and we put in for June. And so as we know, there's not a whole lot of tournaments clamoring to come to Arizona in June, but I think it speaks to that national draw that Cactus Yards now has, that that was a very. Important location and important region for Ripken to come to, so we're going to see them come. June 12 through the 17th at Cactus Yards, it's the furthest west location in that expansion, and like I said, they have tournaments all over the East Coast, they're usually some of the more. Larger and heavily attended ones with Major League Baseball players, et cetera. 6014 capacity, which is about on average for most of our tournaments, maybe a little less. And 30, you know, 300 estimated visitors, at the time, we wouldn't normally have that, so this is just a small example of sort of how that. How Gilbert is now on that, that stage and that national stage of people wanting to come to. We've also seen this in other tournaments, it's not just Cactus Yards, I think, if anything, Cactus Yards just sort of opened up. The interest level within Gilbert. And so if you look at the tournaments that we see, not only in baseball, but mostly football and soccer, in 2019, we had seven. So that's seven outside tournaments that were coming to Gilbert. We're at 85 now, so that's a dramatic increase for us as a team, and I think when you, when you really talk to people and say, why are you wanting to come to Gilbert now? The answer is primarily they want to be in Gilbert. You know, the park cleanliness, the quality of the way the parks are maintained, the fields are maintained, the customer service. And not just that, when they're done with the games, they like to be in Gilbert, they like to go downtown, they like to go to Santan, they like to stay within those areas, so. If anything, I think we're just going to continue to see that demand increase. And at the same time, we also need to make sure that our core goal also is taking care of those local teams, which we've been able to find a balance of the community recreation and the tourism, but. This is definitely one that's not going to slow down anytime soon, and I think we're going to continue to see some dramatic increases there. Which then gets us to events and. Another one where we've seen a lot of increase in what's happening, in 2019, we had about 19 events that Gilbert hosted a year. We're up to 45 now. So if you, and I have to give a shout out to John Raffi and Denise Faroff here today in the back, because their teams are the ones that are. On Cactus Yards and the tournaments and events, and they've really stepped up to the plate of understanding the demand level. That not only Gilbert, but others want and having these events at our parks. I think one of the things we're most proud of, if you see that 90% of participants rate their experience as good or excellent, that's just within the last year, when you have 40 plus events, and I think for all of us. It's very hard to get 90% of people to agree on anything right now, so we're seeing this in all of our programs, tournaments and events, and just a kudos to the team for making sure that experience is always at a high level for visitors. With that being said, we're going to go through some of the two of the larger events that we've had this year. And at the end of sort of the event slide, we're going to talk about some of the lessons learned and, and impact that we've had as well, so we're going to focus on. Some of these, Fourth of July will be the first, so this was my first Fourth of July, official Fourth of July event with the town. Denise told me we used to average about 6,000 or so in previous years, when we went out to Regional, we had 20. So I kept getting messages from people saying, is this a joke or is, are all these streets red on my maps when I'm trying to get there? We had a few council members in attendance and hopefully they enjoyed themselves as well, but we had a blast out there, it was a great time, but it also showed that. There was a lot more people than just Gilbert coming to Gilbert Regional Park that night, and I think it's something that we can expect is going to continue to be at those high levels. More interest when people are going to want to be there, so we're going to have to make some adjustments. We also heard. On larger fireworks displays, so there are some. Things that we are working on, there are some issues in terms of the fall zones with fireworks and airspace and things of that nature, but that's something I think we can work through. And we'll continue to work on that, and one thing I always kind of mention with special events that some people don't know, special events for Parks and Recreation is 100% cost recovery, so we do have sort of a risk benefit a lot of times when we do these events to make sure that. When we put them on, we have the ones that are going to drive revenue, the ones that are more community based and always have that balance to make sure that we're going to hit that bottom line at the end of the year, and so Denise and her team do a great job of that. Just as a FYI, fireworks for us range about 15,000 for a show of this nature, and we're looking at some sponsorship and others to increase that because. There's definitely a lot of people that wants to be there, and we'll go over some of the concerns later on. Gilbert Days, another one, when you add up all the Gilbert Days events together, Denise can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's probably in the 20 to 30,000 range, if not more within that weekend. Not all at one location at the same time. This is an area that I think we, we feel there's some growth opportunities moving into the future. The parade is obviously, you know, a great event, this year we're adding a music festival, and we really feel that there's some potential to maybe add some headline acts in the future as part of this. Festival, we didn't have the budget in place this year because. At this time last year, we didn't know what events would look like, and so we took a more conservative approach moving into this year, but in the future, I think there's a lot of opportunity to continue to make this event. A little bigger and bigger. Also on the promoter event side, so this is one where we're seeing a lot of interests, and I think Glenn kind of mentioned, you can either take these events and foster them and continue to grow them. Or other people are going to want to move their events to you, and I think we're seeing a combination of both. And we have to find that balance of, of which private promoters, you know, want to bring their events, what type of events we'd like to see more of, and that's some of the conversation. And questions that we'll ask towards the end, just to generate that conversation, Oktoberfest being a really good example. Six to 7,000 people this year, really well attended event. Really high grades from people that were there and enjoying it, we're going to continue to see this one grow. But with the success of things like Oktoberfest, we're going to see more and more private promoters, which we already are, wanting to come to Gilbert, and it starts that conversation about frequency and how often we want to do this and that balance between. The community and the tourism aspects. Highland Games is another one, is another good example of some, an event that was previously held in Phoenix that as soon as they saw some of the parks coming online, wanted to be in Gilbert. So about 15,000 people over those days and definitely draws from all across the valley. These are just a few examples, there's, there's a lot more, but we only have capacity for so many right now, and one thing that I wanted to mention, I forgot earlier, is. We have found that our sweet spot is between five and 10,000. So for our locations right now, our parks, our locations, five to 10,000 is where we can comfortably do parking. And traffic and sort of do that, but we're going to talk about new park development, that's going to continue to increase in the future and those numbers are as well, and we'll go over that in a little bit. So this leads us to a park coming up or an event coming up this spring, so Boots in the Park is a career traveling concert series, previously only held in California, you can see some of the headline acts. Old Dominion, Colston Dell that have been there in the past, they're coming to Gilbert, so they, when they were looking at other locations, Gilbert was one of the locations they really wanted to be at, so this year. John Partey is going to be the headliner for us, I think that is in March. Another kind of partnership between Economic Development and Parks and Recreation is working with them, because we look at this as sort of that pilot of the first big. Concert type venue that we bring, national act that we bring to Gilbert Regional, so what can that? Show us, and working with Economic Development within that contract. We're going to be paying a large, paying large attention to the residency of the attendees, the length, the stay, the spending amounts, so that we can see. How people are interacting with this type of event, not only locally, but regionally and more than that, so. This is something we're really excited to have come to Gilbert Regional. And hopefully others ours as well, I think Denise can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's 7,000 tickets already and they haven't even really started. Going too much outside of that, so we're going to continue to see some increases there. So now we get to community concerns and lessons learned, so like anything, when you start to put together these events and they're at new locations. It rises in the increase of traffic concerns, noise concerns and closures. I think this is something we always want to be very respectful of, our goal is to always be a good neighbor at every park, every location, I'll use Cactus Yards as an example. When Cactus Yards first opened up, we heard from Morrison Ranch right away before it even opened up and said. We used to have issues with when they did the maintenance, the closure times, when the lights were on, and we met with them in advance and said. We're going to need some time, it's probably, we're probably going to get it wrong a few of the weekends, but we want to work with you to make sure that we are being the best neighbors possible, and it's a totally different experience than you've had in the past, and we're happy to say that. Since that conversation, we've only had to have one other, you know, with the neighborhood, because that relationship was strong from the start. Were able to work through some of those things like when the lights were on for maintenance, when, you know, where vehicles were, you know, different times of the day generating noise. I think we're taking that same approach when you think of Gilbert Regional. If you ask the neighbors in the bridges about July 4th, they're probably going to tell you they have some extra visitors within their parking lots, within their parks, within their streets. And I think that's something we're going to be working on as we see these increases in events. We'll be working with the neighbors next to Gilbert Regional Park on some of the noise concerns and creating that relationship, because it's so important as we move forward with these events. That we're great neighbors, but also we, we provide those expectations and do those little things that we can to make it better for them. Closures, you may get a few emails in the next week or two with Gilbert Days and the Parade and Marathon, every time we have any of those street closures, it definitely, definitely generates those emails. But that goes in line with, we've tried to limit the amount of events we do of that nature so that we can, you know, be those good stories in the community, and I think that's where we find ourselves with the balance of. How often is too often and what we want to see. But definitely wanted to bring this up, and when we, when we talk about Regional in a little bit, I'll show you some of the, the future exits and entrances, they're going to be developed from that. So then it takes us to the Repair and Preserve, now there was a fascinating stat that Glenn just shared. A couple of weeks ago, and I, I thought it was an amazing one, it was the second one down, that 20% of visitors to Gilbert visit the Repair and Preserve. And I really felt that's a really strong indication of how important this property is and this park is to the people that are visiting Gilbert now and into the future. And when we do our own surveying of people visiting, you know, 50% of the visitors are non residents, you know, already. And then you add in that, you know, the observatory being ranked in the top five for outdoor tourism spots, the potential of the future apparent education center and what that can bring. This is also a location that, you know, I feel has tremendous potential, you know, it's already there right now, but tremendous potential of moving into the future of drawing. The crowds, they're very interested in the burning and the nature perspective, because it is a really unique spot, and I wanted to make sure we're able to mention this as part of the efforts as well. So new park development. We talked a little about Gilbert Regional Park, there's still a lot of space out there, and one of the things that we mentioned is, is the strands for the 25 acre parcel. Which I know we, we already know about, and this is probably going to be one of our first ventures into that true tourism destination spot, that's going to bring people not only from Gilbert, but all across the country. About a 350 million dollar economic impact, 1,500 or so new jobs. So really this is going to be something that I think we're all very excited about, but one that we have to, you know, make sure that we're also working with the neighbors on, you know, we'll have our community meetings moving forward. There's also the 10 acre RFP, which will, is still out right now, and that one we'll know about in March or April. So that's adding another sort of hotel spot, more of a boutique resort style hotel possibly to Gilbert. Right now, just as a FYI, we're actually, in case you get any emails or messages, we're leveling that 10 acre property right now so that we have extra parking. On that site for some of these events, things like July 4th, because it's a, it's a prime spot to be able to have more cars and alleviate that congestion down the roads. And then future development, we mentioned all the future, so just to kind of put into perspective. 10,000 or so, but we feel comfortable with just right there. And that section of the event lawn, so if you look into the future and you see all these other open spaces of turf. The opportunities are endless for whatever we'd like to see happen as a town, and I really think there's a good opportunity for that blend of community plus tourism aspects here. And a couple of things that are being designed for it is not only the Octito Bridge having the ingress and egress. Also looking at a light coming. the ingress and egress, also looking at a light coming from the bridges that takes you, sorry, right around in this area. So looking at, you know, alleviating that congestion, having more entrance and exit points that we can, you know, more effectively run these events. Right now, just because of the stage of development, the only option we have really is in this front section.
Hey Robert.
Yes.
Well, you still have that, that one up. The residents are having the issues with the noise. Can you show us where those are on this?
Absolutely.
This is a perfect.
So right now, Mayor, the issue is right in this section. And so that's, that's a neighbor we've been working with and we'll be meeting with in the next week or two. And we had already kind of talked to them about we've, we've moved a few events, we've changed which kind of events we do there, at what times, changed some of the, you know, decimal readings and some of the speakers. So I think overall we've done very well in that, in that regard. But there is the section here, the one that generated the last one, was there an event more in the upper area of the event lawn, which is one we don't normally program at as much. And so that, you know, kind of projected a little more towards the neighborhood. So I think it's one of those that we were going to, it's that continue to, you know, kind of as I mentioned, be that good neighbor and figure out what are those best spots to set things up, where are those best spots for the speakers and what type of, you know, kind of noise reduction efforts can we make in the future?
Learn as we go.
Yep. So no, excellent point. That's just right in that, that area.
Thank you.
No problem. Desert Sky Park, another one that I think everyone probably just associates with multi-use fields, but actually I think has a combination of being a great location for multi-use fields, but also events into the future. The reason being, at one point, if you get up to the 16 multi-use fields, not only does that fit the, the demand we have for our community needs and the, and the sports leagues, et cetera, but on the tourism side, these are all flat spaces. This space is flat, it's in the basin and it really provides a really great section to have, you know, your different types of festivals and destination type events that you may see. And it would also come with the parking. There's about, you know, 1,700 parking spots, give or take within this, within this location. So another one that, you know, right now, as we've talked about regional desert sky, we're at that 5 to 10,000 range, but you can see what that potentially leads us to. And I think Glenn mentioned that we're very early on in the tourism component, but as we continue to develop, it's going to increase the amount of people that, that we can, that we can have. So with that, those are the things with the slides generally, but really I think, you know, from economic development and Parks Recreation, just wanted to give you a little overview of some of the things that have been happening, some of the things we were able to see on the horizon and maybe ask, you know, what type of thoughts council would have on what type of events you'd like to see in the future, whether it be, you know, centered around music or food or arts and culture. What does the destination event look like? And then also, you know, sort of how often? I think that's one of those, those key things of how do we balance that, the parks for, you know, the, the out of the town residents, the community residents and things of that nature. So happy to answer any questions and Glenn as well.
Chatting about revitalization and reinvestment with you all. We had the great opportunity of chatting with council through council one-on-ones. So this presentation is going to look pretty familiar to you. Through our presentation with any council questions that came up during our one-on-ones, any conversations we had with staff that had questions, we've incorporated all of those into the presentation. So we'll start with redevelopment area recap, talk about the boundary overviews, what the boundaries serve as, talk about boundary options. And then really the heart of what we're getting at today is seeking your input on how we go out to the public to provide this information to them and get their feedback because it's really critical as we build a redevelopment area that they're owning the vision. So first, our redevelopment area recap. Arizona revised statutes calls out redevelopment as common light, but in economic development, we feel that that term is really an antiquated nomenclature. Today, when we talk about redevelopment, we talk about revitalization and reinvestment. We do this through a unified vision. And so that unified vision then creates an offset of things like improved infrastructure, improved quality of life, it increases property values, it encourages reinvestment and attracts new development. And so the designation of a redevelopment area is done through the state statute through law and it's saying that we as a town are then committed to ensuring that we stem or reverse the deterioration of a particular area. We see the benefits of this through the Heritage District, which was established as a redevelopment area in 1989. Today, when we look at our return on investment for the Heritage District, for every $1,000 the town invests, we receive $1.47 in return. And then we also look at the private sector. So for every dollar we invest, we see $7 returned by the private sector. But by no means are we suggesting that the Northwest redevelopment area is the same as the Heritage District. The Heritage District is really our community living room and our entertainment district, whereas the Northwest redevelopment area is an area of employment and residence. And so as we look at, again, committing to a vision, we've had four redevelopment plans. Through that time, we benefited from the input of nine different mayors and various council members. But what's really great is that that vision has stayed the same and remained. So that's what's really important about a redevelopment area. We also look at the buffer area. So as we look at what are the value per acre, the Heritage District in the early 90s was surpassing its buffer area slightly. And then in the 2000s, early 2000s, we see that the buffer area started surpassing the Heritage District. This is the time where we were really laying the foundation through a redevelopment plan. And right at that timeframe where you see in 2017, right here, this is when we were able to start enacting some of those goals and tactics behind the redevelopment plan and that vision. And you can see now that the Heritage District is surpassing the buffer area by about $125,000 per acre. As part of our effort for the redevelopment area in the Northwest, we brought together a steering committee. We thought it was really important to have a think tank that could help us look at the area and examine it from a number of lenses. So we have business owners and residents, developers, architects and contractors. We brought in land use attorneys, educational partners, community leaders and town staff to look at the Northwest growth area. We began this effort in 2018 and as we were at a council retreat, just like we are today, and sought some direction on whether or not this area should be established as a ARS redevelopment designation. Through that, council asked us to also bring in the private sector. And so we did that through the Urban Land Institute's Arizona Technical Assistance Panel. We pulled together the steering committee that I previously mentioned. We completed a draft vision plan for one of the boundary options. And so we have some goals and tactics associated with that. We provided an update at the council retreat in the spring and certainly we had our briefings. And so through the Arizona Technical Assistance Panel with the Urban Land Institute, they looked at a myriad of things. They looked at market potential and planning and design. They looked at development strategies, at implementation strategies. All of that was then filtered into this vision plan, which is still in draft form, but has eight goals, each one which has associated tactics to help us revitalize and reinvest in the Northwest growth area. There's some of the questions that we've received, you'll see these as FAQs. One of them is why a redevelopment area? Why not a character area or a growth area? And the reason that we feel that redevelopment area is critical is because again, when we look at committing through the ARS to having a vision in place, we know that as council changes, as staff changes, that that vision that is created by the community remains in place. So does redevelopment area though, provide disproportionate assistance to one part of the community. So if you're focused on this area for redevelopment, what happens with the rest of the community? So we actually view this as a really incredible opportunity. The, the areas in our community that are newer are certainly seeing investment. We've actually seen situations where businesses that were located in the Northwest growth area were really challenged and struggled and so they relocated to some of our newer areas. What we're able to do in a redevelopment area is impart tactics that we can then use as other parts of our community age. So when we look at the boundaries again, I just, I want to hammer this home, that redevelopment is really revitalization and reinvestment. And so we, we often hit the question, what are the tools key to a redevelopment area? And this is a really hard question to answer because there is an entire toolbox and they don't apply uniformly. So one area that may need an infill program, one area may need an adaptive reuse program and another area like a shopping center may need a facade renovation program. So as part of our redevelopment plan, that is part of the overall adoption by council, we lay forth the goals and tactics and we really identify which portions of, of the area need which tools. The ARS also calls for nine factors of redevelopment. So in order to establish a redevelopment area, a town has to, has to say that it has one or more of these nine factors that apply to the area. That allows you then to form a redevelopment area. But we also know that there has to be some cohesion. You have to have the public infrastructure. It works hand in hand with the commercial and industrial and certainly works hand in hand with the residential. So they all work together. We also want to note that through redevelopment area, property rights are protected through Prop 207, which ensures that properties maintain their entitlements and cannot be downzoned. We also in the Heritage District have no property designation. So even though it's designated as an overlay, redevelopment overlay, if I'm a property owner, whether a business or a resident, I can pull my title report and it does not say that I'm in a redevelopment area. So again, this is the town committing to our residents and to our businesses that we are stemming that deterioration that naturally happens over time. And we anticipate that this Northwest growth area or redevelopment area would also not have a property designation. So with our next steps, we're certainly seeking your direction on the public feedback. And we really want to introduce the public to the boundary options and get their feedback from those and then bring those to the steering committees. And ultimately we're working towards an adoption timeline of June of 2022. So we wanted to talk about those boundary options. The first is the Northwest Growth Area General Plan option, and you have seen this in the general plan, which was recently adopted by the residents. This, this configuration is a contiguous area of employment except for El Dorado Lakes, which is located here. It essentially runs from Baseline Road just to south of Elliott and then Arizona Avenue to Cooper. We did look at those nine factors for redevelopment and certainly we know that those are prevalent. We presented those to you in the spring. We saw things like faulty inadequate street layout, some situations that are in danger like reproperty, tax delinquency. None of this is because of efforts of bad planning. We have incredible industrial complexes within our Northwest growth area. This is just what happens as a community continues to age and we see that natural progression over time. And Kyle's team does an incredible job of working with businesses that are coming into our community to develop a vision. But right now, there's not a tool in place for those businesses that are aging. Imagine what they can do with their property. Because it's a contiguous area of employment. And we also hear, you know, often when, when individuals are visiting a community, they like to be able to identify where they're at. And so in economic development, we call this gateways and creating gateway opportunities. So we have Bayside to the north and Chandler to the west. And through, through placemaking, through banners, through street improvements, through artwork, we can really identify that you're in Gilbert as you're along those corridors. And so when we looked at the pros and cons of this boundary option, it was recently approved in the general plans. The public is very familiar with it. It joins those employment uses and it provides an opportunity for the Heritage District to expand in the future. The Heritage District is right here, adjacent to this boundary configuration. Its redevelopment designation expires in 2028 unless the community decides to continue with that, that designation. And at that time, we would have done again, look at those boundaries. So ask if the Heritage District needs to expand north or south or east or west. But residential housing is not prominent in this. So again, as we look at how an area works cohesively together with the infrastructure, the commercial and the residential, we're really lacking that portion. It's difficult to describe this boundary. When someone, you know, when a business comes in and says, well, where's the Northwest growth area? I've heard about this area that is encouraging reinvestment, that has more opportunity zones located in it. It's difficult to describe this boundary. It lacks the many opportunities that you'll see in the next boundary configuration. And then there's also some shopping centers and employment centers that are really ripe for revitalization today that are not encapsulated in this boundary option. So we talked about that think tank at our steering committee that we brought together. And they, they really looked at the data, you know, provided, you know, by Gilbert, provided by our departments across the town and provided through the Urban Land Institute. And what they said was that the data really suggests that there's an opportunity for a larger boundary. And so that boundary option, we're calling the connect option. It's approximately 10 square miles. So it runs from Baseline Road to Ray Road and Arizona Avenue over to Burke. And it would remove the Heritage District since the Heritage District already has its designation as a redevelopment area. We talked about those employment centers that are ripe for revitalization and reinvestment and opportunities for things like facade improvement programs. So you can see these shopping centers leading into the Heritage District. We've actually had brokers, developers and property owners reach out and say, how, what is the ultimate vision that Gilbert has for that area? That's okay. I'll just keep talking about the, the vision for the area. So they asked, what's the vision for the area? And we, we haven't, we don't have one in place just yet, which is really why that this, this opportunity right now today is really important. And you can see, we also included our public, our, our, our town complex in here because we're doing our own revitalization and reinvestment today. And certainly the shopping center across the street has some opportunities out there to actively market. This slide shows infill sites that have opportunity again to redevelop. And so under this boundary configuration, this is essentially where you would see the first boundary. But you can see, we can start to encapsulate a lot more opportunities to grab some of those infill sites and help reimagine how they can develop. But we get questions like, so I own a home or I own a business in the area and will I be forced to leave or make way for this redevelopment? And our answer is absolutely not. Our goal and our objective is to provide tools and resources that can help businesses, businesses reinvest in their, in their business or in their home that they so choose to. And again, really stem that deterioration that we see naturally occur over time in communities. We looked at those nine factors for redevelopment and certainly found prevalence of those within this boundary configuration. And then we also looked at, you know, the residential component, again, looking at how those work together harmoniously. So we looked at the three what, we pulled into our reports for the 311 app. And these were issues that were really related to maintenance. And so you can see this larger boundary configuration starts to encapsulate a lot of those maintenance issues. And again, if you look, you know, here, where my pointer is, is really where we would see the other boundary, the Northwest growth area boundary. So this begins to encapsulate a lot more of those maintenance related issues. So how does that, this potential redevelopment area, 311 app request compares to the rest of the community? And when I just pulled the numbers, this area actually has about 20%, it's a little over 20% of the 311 requests. So this is designing, the 311 does not also include, you know, calls for requests. This is solely what's coming off of the app. So as we look at residential, we also look at non HOA neighborhoods. Those are outlined in orange. We're not trying to create an environment that's an us HOA versus them, non HOA. Again, we're really trying to look at how do we overall ensure that all areas of community, all areas of the community are vibrant and retain that sense of what makes Gilbert really special. We also looked at the We also looked at the assessor parcels that are related to the areas that received CDBG funding. So those are the areas in yellow. And as you can see, this starts to encapsulate those areas that are in need of assistance. And then we, we looked at those non HOA neighborhoods and asked, you know, what, is there any neighborhood neglect happening? And when we looked at neighborhood neglect, we, we look at everything from outdoor storage, your trash and debris, to parking on unapproved surfaces, broken windows, aluminum foil in the windows. We certainly saw the prevalence of those. Vegetation, a lot of parking on unapproved surfaces, a lot of outdoor storage issues. And I had the, the pleasure of chatting with Lori Diorio and Code and really understanding what tools we have available. Kyle's going to talk about those shortly after this. And had a great opportunity to chat with Melanie in Neighborhood Resources to really understand, again, if we're going to encapsulate some of this residential, how can we use tools we have today to really help encourage homeowners to reinvest? Again, these are just a couple more pictures. Recreational vehicles parked long term on our streets or on unapproved surfaces was one issue we saw. And then we saw things like, you know, block walls that are deteriorating. And we have a block wall program already in place. So it's really exciting to know that we, we have these tools and now we can encourage our homeowners through tools. But we also have questions like, my, my neighborhood, homes in my neighborhood are selling for over 500,000. I'm now in this boundary option. So what does redevelopment really mean for me and my neighbors? And I liken it to owning a home. So you own a home, it's a beautiful home. You have to reinvest in your home and your maintenance. But through time, you may have this beautiful home and you realize that your kitchen or your bathrooms are outdated. They're really not in line with the current trends. We think of redevelopment in that same way and how we invest in our community. We have a beautiful community, but we have to keep, you know, we have to keep it vibrant and ensure that we're, we're doing so. Have we seen other neighborhoods in the greater Phoenix area, you know, utilizing redevelopment? So this is Arcadia, everyone knows from Arcadia's. But Arcadia in the early 2000s had a redevelopment plan in place. And so we've seen that reinvestment that the neighborhoods have made in, in that area through the redevelopment plan. And again, that committed vision. So this is, I think, I don't, I don't live in this, I don't live in this boundary. Why do I care about redevelopment? And it's really because deteriorating areas are not attractive for business. They're not attractive for residents. We see flight of business and residents. And our goal is to create an exceptional place for our residents. A place where they can not only live, but also work. So we have to continue to retain that vibrancy in order for businesses to want to remain in our community. And again, you know, we, we look at this value per acre. The redevelopment opportunities also help, you know, encourage the buffer areas around to also see that benefit of the value per acre increase. We talked about the gateway options or opportunities in, in the Northwest Growth Area boundary. Those are outlined in red. But we also have additional opportunities, again, art, banners, streetscapes, placemaking, to really create a place that is easy to identify. So as we're leading into the Heritage District, we're now able to connect this light industrial employment, continuous employment to our entertainment district as the Von Vennaler comes in, creating a really cohesive and unique entry. And then creating that continuity between our town complex and the Heritage District. And we see this done in counterpart cities. So we reached out to Durham and they have these gateways which connect their employment areas. And we do this in a very similar manner through streetscape improvements and wayfinding identification. But we realized that this, this is a large boundary. We can't treat, again, going back to that toolbox, we can't treat this contiguous area of employment the same as we will these shopping centers or the same as we will, you know, the, the family and the residential that is located within this boundary configuration. But we, what we know is that oftentimes, place marketing and place branding comes about naturally. So this is an area in North Carolina called North End. And as this industrial area began to develop, all of the neighborhoods around it started taking on that name and really owning that brand. We see that with residential areas like the Willow District, which, you know, the neighborhood really came together. They reinvested, they invested in branding, they market their own neighborhood. These, again, all happen just very naturally in the area. And then this is Charlotte. Central City is this area here, all of your skyscrapers, what you really know as your employment area. And South End is here. This is very similar to the Heritage District in its makeup. It's an entertainment area with residential, not high-rise, high-rise buildings. But South End has really started to develop. They actually developed a vision plan for their area. And we're looking at, you know, is there an opportunity with Dilworth to incorporate Dilworth in here? But the Dilworth community really owned their brand and they came outside. Wait, this is the very first streetcar community outside of downtown Center City. And we really want to retain our name of Dilworth. So again, this is the community owning their brand and their place marketing. We see that with our neighboring cities in uptown Chandler, who have marketed this area as eclectic area for entrepreneurs and startup businesses. I'm sure many of you have seen the banners along the streets as you drive through this area. And then it's their only area in town that they have this Chandler Art Project where all of the municipal utility boxes are painted with art. So again, it's really designating that this is a special and unique place. And we see this again in San Antonio. This is just an example, San Antonio has, you know, their downtown brand. But all of these neighborhoods have taken on an identity and they have their own place, place marketing and their own placemaking that happens. So again, I mentioned it's a larger boundary. We're looking at three square miles in the Northwest Growth Area compared to the redevelopment area potential to connect at 10 square miles. And so the question is, is it, is it too large? What do neighboring cities do? And we looked at Phoenix as the most recent example because in July of 2020, they looked at their eight redevelopment areas and they came in and said, you know, there's, there's a disconnect. We really feel that if we redraw these boundaries, we start to create some cohesion between these eight redevelopment areas and we're able to help more people. And so our mission is to anticipate, create, help through a larger boundary option. The data suggests that we can do more. So as we look at this again, three square miles compared to three square miles, it would remove the Heritage District from this boundary. So this just kind of gives you an idea of that overlay and the comparison. Shouldn't it came about, will a larger boundary require a modification of the general plan? And the answer is no, because this area is identified in the general plan as a growth area and a growth area in the general plan is identified as a contiguous area of employment. So we see that this area continuing to be an area that we're focused on growing from an employment standpoint. This boundary, however, again, starts to impart some of the tools that are really necessary to stem that deterioration and, I guess, stem the deterioration of the area. So we, we would overlay that on top of the, the growth area. And I think, I don't know if I mentioned this, but I, I think it's pertinent in the conversation that a redevelopment area sunsets after 10 years. So if we achieve all of our goals that we set forth to achieve, that area sunsets and we're done. Or we can go back to the community and say, we still have some goals that we need to achieve and seek their input. In this boundary option, residential is a key consideration. We're able to, you know, provide those tools to the neighborhood that Kyle is going to talk about. The boundaries are clearly marketing, clearly delineated for marketing. It starts to encompass areas that are in need of revitalization today. It provides more opportunities for those gateways, really helping you identify where you are in the community. And opportunity for pride of place. This was one of the goals in that draft vision plan that we had for the Northwest Growth Area. But we do realize that it could create some concern amongst residents. And that's why we're really here today to talk to you about this public input. We want the residents to really think of this as revitalization and reinvestment. It does tie the Heritage District boundaries, however. That doesn't mean that the area north of the Heritage District couldn't take on a Heritage District north like, like here to it. And the new general plan was recently adopted. So we anticipate questions from the community on, well, why didn't we consider this larger boundary configuration as a growth area as opposed to redevelopment area? So those are questions we'll want to field. We certainly got through the advantages. So what are the advantages and disadvantages? We've, we talked about the advantages, but I do think it's important to talk about one of the disadvantages that really came through conversations with staff. We have a lean staff and we are very innovative and always excited to help our community. But in having the lean staff, we have to be really cautious on how we outline our tactics so that we're not overburdening anyone department at any time. So we really have to work cohesively to carefully construct a timeline on how we achieve those goals within that 10-year, 10-year plan. So this is where we're coming to you for the public outreach discussion. And I can say, through my efforts and our, our staff's efforts in the redevelopment area for the Heritage District, the public outreach and input we receive is so paramount. At the end of the day, it's not our vision as staff. It's really the community's vision that we are carrying. And we just have, you know, the, the great opportunity to enact that vision. And so we see this process in a similar manner. And so one of the conversations that came out of our one-on-one with the council was this opportunity to say, to go to the, the public and intro these boundaries. So I, you know, help them understand what the boundary options are and really get the public's input from, from that effort. And then potentially bring it to our steering committee and have them make your recommendations. So they look at all of the public input, they'll make a recommendation so that council can make that boundary decision. We do currently have a website landing page on GilbertAC.gov with efforts for the Northwest Growth Area. And so we would anticipate building that out, having public meetings, really interacting in a thoughtful manner. And so that's, you know, really where we're at as the next step. So we're looking to you to see, does that meet the intent of going out to the public and, and the needs for council to make a really thoughtful decision on these boundaries?
That was great, Amanda. Thank you. Any comments or questions for Amanda at this point?
Morning, Mayor and Council. I will touch briefly on the next item, kind of a continuation of what Amanda started with. Some of the projects and goals, or not goals, but some of the processes that are already in place to, to help with some of this revitalization and reinvestment that Amanda talked about. I think it's important, and I've, I've heard Amanda say it in the past, where a lot of the stuff with a preservation ordinance or a property maintenance ordinance deals with that first broken window. There's a broken window in an area and if there isn't that maintenance or that reinvestment, if there isn't that upkeep, then that next broken window just kind of adds to it and the next one adds to that. And pretty soon you have an area that's really in need of some, some upkeep. And maybe there isn't some reinvestment there because of that. So some of the programs that we do have in place are listed here and I'll just walk through them briefly. The first one is our paint reuse program. So it's run by the town's household hazardous waste group. So this team will collect paint from residents when they're done with it. They'll mix it all together. It usually comes out a gray or a tan. And then residents can pick it up in five gallon buckets and take it to their homes and, and, and use it in those locations. It is limited to, I think, 25 gallons a person at one time. But this goes to help some folks with the peeling paint or faded paint, some of that thing. So one of the programs that's in place, Amanda had a great slide up that showed the areas in the Heritage District or in the Northwest Corridor that are eligible for CDBG funding. So as you know, the town does get CDBG funding and we use it for a variety of reasons in those different areas, most of which at this point in time has been for infrastructure projects. Melanie and Robert do an amazing job running the emergency and minor home repair program. You've seen some of the success stories and presentations before. It is quite the program. This helps with things such as heating and cooling, electrical, plumbing, gas, excuse me, glass repair and roof leaks. And I mentioned some of this because when we start to talk about a property maintenance code or a preservation code, it, it may or may not quite line up the exact same way. The intent of this slide really isn't to focus on the Arizona Hoarding Task Force, but it was meant to show an example of other regional partnerships or regional entities that are out there that the town can partner with. And when certain things come up and Lori Diorio and her team are able to reach out to, to other partners, they do so and they make those connections and they, they try to help in the best way that they possibly can. One thing that the staff has been talking about for the last couple of years, it hasn't moved forward yet, but we'd like to start that discussion, is a, is a tool lending program. And we've seen this in other communities and it's, it's really a, a program where residents or groups of residents can approach the town and we've got tools in place or a trailer with tools in it. We'd lend that out and it can be used for cleanup on personal properties. It can be used for cleanups in neighborhoods, HOAs, that sort of thing. But it, it provides kind of a, a tool and a program at least to help facilitate some of that, that cleanup. Again, we'd have to go through it and kind of get the parameters in place, but it might be worth exploring for sure. This is Phoenix's truck that they've got, that they use for their tool lending program. As I've mentioned, we have had, oh, before I get to that point, these are some of the examples that Lori shared with me from the Northwest Corridor. A lot of these, you can see, are, you know, there's roof problems. That can be handled by some of the emergency and minor home repair. But a lot of the things such as the hoarding and some of the stuff in the backyards, the, the storage, we really don't have much control over because it's behind fences, it's in backyards. It's nothing that we can really access. We have certain limited availability to enter people's properties. So at this point in time, some of that is, has been a little hard for Lori and her team to, to actually take care of. But I did mention, we, we have started discussions about a property maintenance or preservation code. And again, you can call it kind of whatever you want, depending upon how you want to do it. Is it code compliance? Is it code enforcement? I mean, there's a, there's a way to kind of structure that message there. As I mentioned, our code enforcement folks right now are, are pretty limited to life safety measures. So unless something is, is really dangerous, we do have a little bit of a limited ability to take care of some of these things. A property maintenance ordinance or a preservation ordinance should start with looking, should start with being a tool to help. So, you know, Lori's code compliance folks, they go out and they have those discussions. We have an ordinance in place and we're able to, to talk to the folks. We're able to put them with some of the programs that we have. We try to educate and, and help prior to any type of enforcement. Now, the thing with the property maintenance code or preservation ordinance is you would have that enforcement at the backend. So if we tried all the different avenues and we were not able to get roofs fixed or windows fixed or, or storage in backyards fixed, things of that nature, there would be an enforcement action available. That usually comes with some sort of citation and then that obviously begins a process through the court system. One of the things we wanted to discuss then too, oh, I'm sorry. There are several different communities in the valley that have property maintenance or preservation ordinances. And, and I will tell you that these things can be as far reaching as you want or as, as generous as you want. There are some where I've seen where it regulates the temperature of water that you have to have in the house or, or how low that you can get the air conditioner or how high you can get the heating. So it can go as far as you want or it can be as, as flexible and, and helping as you want. But you can see there are several different communities that have property maintenance codes or preservation ordinances. So one of the things we wanted to visit with council about was whether or not, since this, this discussion has started, would you like us to move forward in looking at a property maintenance ordinance or preservation code and implementing maintenance ordinance or preservation code and implementing some sort of tool lending program? Should we just continue with the programs that we have in place? I will tell you, coming out of the discussion that we just had, depending upon how that conversation went, kind of dictates a little bit of the way that this goes. We could do a pilot ordinance, but it would have to be in a redevelopment area. So depending upon how that looked, that's how that would fall. We would not be able to target a neighborhood, we would make something completely up. Morrison Ranch, we don't like the way your trees are going, we're going to put a preservation ordinance over you, whereas Seville, you're doing just fine, we don't care. We can't unequally treat different parts of the community. However, if it's in a redevelopment area, we've already established the boundaries where there's going to be some different processes and flexibility and tools put in place. So if we move forward with a pilot and don't do it townwide, it would need to be in a defined redevelopment area, otherwise we'd have to go townwide. So that was quick, I know. Sorry, Elena, she said I had 50 minutes, so after we talk about this, maybe I can sell some jokes or juggle, but that's all the slides I had, just to kind of start the discussion on the preservation ordinance and get council's direction on how you'd like us to proceed.
Kyle, can a pilot ordinance be applied to the neighborhoods that have the PKID districts?
I don't believe so. I'm going to look at Chris, but I don't believe so. I mean, those are, the PKID, PKID areas are... Okay. Mayor, Council, there's really no ask with this presentation, it's more up to provide an overview of where we currently stand with land uses in Gilbert. Most of the information you're going to see is strictly zoning, not general plan, because we wanted to give you that snapshot. There is some stuff in here about the general plan, so you can kind of see a little bit longer term where we'll end up. One of the biggest differences too, when we start to look at the numbers, and you'll see a disparity between the two, zoning does not include the county islands. So when we look at general plan, it's the entire town within our planning area. Zoning, we don't control the county islands, so the numbers will be a little bit different. So I'm just jumping straight into it. So the town, as you know, is 72.6 square miles, which is 46,464 acres. So there's 640 square miles, 640 acres in a square mile. So the town currently has approximately 3,670 acres of commercially zoned land in the town. You can see the breakout up here. Of that total, about 840 acres are undeveloped or vacant. Commercial zoning districts comprise approximately 10% of the town. And you can see, looking at this, regional commercial is our biggest commercial area. It's the one where we've got the most, and it's the one where we've got most of the non-vacant, and that's areas like Santan Mall. General commercial is the next intense zoning district. You can see that it's about 2%, followed by shopping center, a little over 1.8%. Community commercial and then neighborhood commercial. We have very little neighborhood commercial, and then when we get into the Heritage Village Center and Gateway, there's, because it's such a specific area, there isn't a lot in that town, in that area. I do want to grab one other thing real quick. When we talk about some other non-residential, what did I do? Did I do that, or did you do that? There we go. There we go. When we talk about some of our other non-residential land uses, you can see here, our public facility, institutional, we have quite a bit actually, but you can see the difference between the vacant and the non-vacant, so it's almost 12%. That takes into account a lot of our parks, so the Regional Park, Freestone Park, all those, all those large areas. Then as you look at the office, office and business park is about 1,000 acres all combined, which is about 3% of the town. So you can see there's not a whole lot of, hardly is any neighborhood office really. There is some general office, again, the gateway. Did I do that? That's all right. And then business park, areas like Rivian Lawn are about 1%, almost 2% of the town if you combine the vacant and the non-vacant. Industrial is 1,600 acres or about 5% of the town. There has been, let's do it again, there's been quite an increase in light development, light industrial developments within the last year or so. You can see it at the Spectrum and McQueen and Elliott, so next to Northrop Grumman, you're seeing a large amount of light industrial buildings going up there. Between Gilbert Road and Lindsay on Jermaine, you've seen a lot of development by Trammell Crow, that's where Silent Air is at, there's been, even on the Rockefeller property that was on the south side of Jermaine, several different larger light industrial areas going in there. And now we're actually starting to see it at Power and Warner. Trammell Crow is again in there building some. It was interesting, Dan and I used to have the conversations about, you know, when are we going to see this kind of shift in office and light and development down the 202? You know, you talk about Priest and all of those areas, and we were just kind of waiting and waiting. Well, it's finally starting to come through, and we're starting to see it, and it's moving pretty quickly because we're already seeing some of the development at Warner and 202, or Power and the 202, I'm sorry. It's not moving.
Kyle, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Sorry, and I apologize, I had to run real quick, but did you define vacant before I came back in? Is that vacant land, or is that vacant buildings and vacant land together?
Just vacant land.
Okay, thank you.
So Saun's team has an excellent GIS group, and so they are able to go in and pull data from the assessor's office, so it'll tell us what is vacant and what is not vacant, and then we can build our maps off of, okay, this has got a building on it or not. So there could be something with a building on it that's vacant, that's not showing up that way. Here are the totals then. You can see the, what I like to focus on is really what's in the middle. So the non-residential totals in the town, there's about 23% of the town is non-residential at the end of this. So 23% of the town is zoned as non-residential development, and you'll see the single-family and multifamily numbers here in a minute, but you can start to do the math and kind of see where we're going to, where we're going to end up on a zoning basis of this. Non-vacant totals were about 21%, vacant totals were pretty close to 9%. So as we start to talk about build-out and when we're going to end, you can start to kind of see these numbers and how we're playing out. Again, it's going to depend on the economy and some of the decisions that are made, but you can see where we're definitely heading. Before Patrick says it and makes another KJ joke, I know that eight and 21 do not equal 22. There's an error on the math, in the math, so it is closer to the 29%, 30% when you look at, when you add those two numbers together.
So the town total in the middle should be closer to 29%?
Be 29% non-residential, yeah. At the end of this, we're going to end up being about 70/30 when you see the numbers. The graph has switched a little bit, it's showing in a different way, but it's good for this because this is showing the single-family and multifamily. You can see that Gilbert is largely SF6 and SF7-driven, so that's kind of the density that is always fit, and that equates to about three and a half to five units per acre is where that really is. And I'll show you some slides here in a minute or two that kind of show how we got to that location. But when you look at Gilbert, the percentage of zoning, we're very heavily in that SF6, SF7 area. Again, you can see that multifamily low and multifamily median, only about 3% of the community, so not a lot of multifamily in the town.
When you say 3% of the community, that's including residential and commercial altogether?
Yes.
Because if we split multifamily outward, approximately 11% of all of our residents...
Percentage of the households, yes, closer to 11%. This, so this is a slide, oh, I'm sorry.
Kyle, could you go back one more?
Yep.
Maybe you should have fed us first. But when I'm looking at this and the orange, which says is vacant, and you start looking at the SF35 and 43, that's a higher percentage than other areas within our community. And I think I just wanted to make a point that as we start looking at projects that are going to be coming forward, we're starting to see where some of those types of properties are the ones that are asking us to change their zoning.
Yes, you're making, you're making an excellent point on two fronts. The SF35 and SF43 for a long, long time have been, I'll call them holding districts. So when you look at things at the southeast corner of Jermaine and Valvista, so kind of there by the water treatment plant, oh, sorry, wastewater treatment plant, that is all zoned SF35 right now. So that's going to show up on here as vacant, knowing that over time that is going to change, and I've got a slide that'll kind of talk to that. To the second point of that is, you're right, a lot of the infill pieces, so if there was a homestead and everything developed on the farmland around it and they kept their five-acre homestead, that's still SF35, that's now coming in for changes to SFD, SFA, SF6, something of that nature. So you're right, that's why those numbers seem a little bit elevated on that side. We don't have SF43 and SF35 subdivisions sitting out there anywhere, those just don't exist. To speak a little bit to the general plan, I mentioned that the residential three and a half to five dwelling units was kind of the area where Gilbert saw the most, the highest number of density, so that's really where that SF6 and SF7 comes into play. So here's the residential totals. This will not add up either. A lot closer. Percentage of the town, so this is, again, just the zoned land, it's not everything coming out of the general plan, but it's closer to about 55% when you're looking at this and you take out some of that county island land as well. All right, so again, at the top, you can see the zoning, right now we're about 55% residential, about 20, that was supposed to be 29% non-residential. When you look at the general plan, when we get done, let's say, all of the land in Gilbert annexes and develops out the way that it's planned, we're at about 70% residential and 30% non-residential. And that really, if it's changed in the last, since I've been here, it's probably only changed a few percentage points either way. We'll get some that go from non-residential to residential, and then we've occasionally had a couple residential that have gone non-residential, so there's a little bit of back and forth when it comes to some of the zoning. How do we compare with the other communities? And it's very interesting because if you look at the other communities' data, it kind of tells the story about that community. This data is taken from MAG. So what MAG will do is it will go out and it will pull everything together based on the general plans, and it will, MAG will try to do the best they can to make apples apples, so we're not looking at different things. So that's why you're going to see something as, like, other employment. I can't tell you exactly what is in other employment, why it didn't fall in some of the office or industrial, but in order to make all of these different community zoning districts and general plan categories line up, this is how MAG has kind of put it together. But if you look at the far left, you can see Gilbert by far has the most single-family of any of the different communities. When you step over to the next one, you can see that Tempe has the most multifamily, and a lot of that has to do then with ASU and just the way their numbers lay out. It's very interesting looking at the MAG maps now because they've got two different tabs. You can look at existing land use and you can look at future land use. So as you toggle between the two, you can see kind of where they plan for us to go based on our general plan. When you look at Tempe's, it doesn't change much because they're basically landlocked, they're basically built out, so it's interesting to see where in the cycle the different communities are located. And then, of course, you get to, like, open space in Scottsdale, you know, they've got a lot of open space, there's state land, there's Indian Bend Wash, so that tells a little bit of different story. And then you can even see our friends in Queen Creek. I mean, they're a young community that's just now growing, so they've got a lot of open space, a lot of agriculture, and a lot of vacant land still. But I did want to give you a few numbers, why I grabbed this. This would have made a great slide, but I thought about it after the presentation was done. So I mentioned that Gilbert was around 58 commercial, 14, I'm sorry, 58 residential, 14 commercial. If you look at Chandler, they're 55 and 20. Mesa is 45 and 16. Phoenix was 33% residential, 17% commercial. Queen Creek was 26% residential and 5% commercial, which means a lot of their land still is vacant or agricultural. Scottsdale was at 37 and 8, and Tempe was at a little more balanced at 46 and 32. These numbers really don't change too much between where they are now in the MAG numbers and where they plan to be with their general plans in the future. There is, there definitely is a shift in some of the numbers. Queen Creek is obviously the biggest. They look like they'll end up about 42% residential and 30% on the non-residential side. Gilbert ends up being, we talked about it, about 70/30. So like I said, that would have made a great slide, and I can still put the information together and get it to you. What would have really been neat was to spend public the time and just kind of walk through that MAG data and show you the different maps, because that's really pretty powerful, and it's really easy to find on their website, so I can send you links as well, but that really tells some good stories across the valley.
Yeah, if you could, that information that you just gave us, if you could put that together in an email to all of us and the link to the MAG site, that would be great.
Absolutely, absolutely, we'll do that.
I'm a data nerd when it comes to planning stuff.
It's interesting too, because MAG will always hold training sessions on their data where anybody can go and learn how to use the data, how to run queries, how to run reports. It's really good stuff. When we shared some of the multifamily information with council, a lot of that information is where we got from MAG too, because they pull all the census data together, and then it's really easy to go in and compare communities or run reports, so really good information. So we talked a little bit about how much vacant residential land we still have left, and we talked about kind of the density we're seeing Gilbert run right now, about that three and a half to five. And I just pulled two reasons kind of why we're where we're at. Power Ranch, and what's interesting to look at some of these master plans from 20 years ago or so is, you know, this has got a gross density of 3.7 units an acre. It is, it's spanning almost three square miles north to south, but if you look in there, there is a ton of different densities, anything from multifamily medium up there at the top and along Power Road to, you know, SF8, I see a little SF35 in the middle, but overall, this combination of densities is what drives that three and a half to five. Seville was the exact same way, they're at 2.3 units an acre. And again, I believe this started in, I want to say, late 90s, early 2000s is when this started. So, and if I remember, it was quite the interesting story, it started in the county and was like annexed halfway through the process. So, but again, you can see a lot of different zoning districts. This one actually does have some SF35 that's located along the eastern side. So, but as you blend that across the development, you can end up with that 2.35. And again, as we start to talk about, you know, land at Jermaine and Valvista, or Valvista and Chandler Heights, I mean, there's still several very large acreages that are, to Kathy's point, right now probably in an SF35 holding pattern that we're going to see come through with a mix of this. It was interesting, right as the recession happened, is when the master plans stopped. So you saw builders just backing off, nobody would want to buy hundreds of acres anymore, and we had zombie subdivisions for a long time. So as the market started to warm back up and these builders got back into things, it was 20-acre chunks, 40-acre chunks, 60-acre chunks, it was not the big ones. Not until we saw Waterston on Valvista, and we've seen some of the stuff in Morrison Ranch, we start to see larger acreages come back. So I anticipate we'll start to see those larger acreages on those other two properties that I mentioned.
That southwest corner of Jermaine and Valvista is what, 140 acres?
320 total.
Oh, it's 320 total.
If you go all the way down to Queen Creek.
Because it's a whole mile, yeah.
It is a mile from, yeah, from Jermaine to Queen Creek, but it's not... But it's not, it's not a full mile from, yeah, east-west because we've got the treatment plant and then there's the soccer fields and then Blanford's Development is on that.
It's going to be close to a half mile from east-west.
Definitely, definitely. Because we've got, circulation plan shows that's where the half mile roads would be located.
That's, looks like it's going to come to us all in one big chunk, that southwest, southeast corner.
I hope so. The next few slides are just, I wanted to show you some examples of what we're seeing. We're, we are definitely not slowing down. We're seeing projects in residential, commercial, industrial, a little bit of everything. So I was just going to bounce through a couple different projects. So this is Cadiz that's being developed right now. This is the enclave at Madera Park. Again, just some different building elevations. I did want to show you some examples of densities though, because when we do start to talk about multifamily low, multifamily median, multifamily high, what's the difference? What does it mean? This is an example of a multifamily low project. This is a condominium project. It's the towns at Annecy, so Santan Village Parkway in Boston, kind of right there in the heart of that Santan Village area. Very nice development going in, but this comes in at the multifamily low density. Multifamily low is eight to 14.
Eight to 14 acres for a multifamily low, 14 to 25 for MFM, and 25 to 50 for MFL, I mean MFH, excuse me.
Correct. And it seemed for the longest time, most of the projects coming in were in that 12 units to the acre range. So we had a lot of multifamily low at one point, but that's starting to be pushed a little bit. Another multifamily low project you're starting to see quite a bit of are these bungalow projects. So this is Bungalows at Ray. And the reason that these are coming in is multifamily and not single family is because they come in on one lot. It's one large lot with a bunch of different buildings on it. So they're not, when it comes in that way, that's what it is. It's multifamily. And it also triggers this density because it's one lot and there's, you know, 15 units an acre or 14 units an acre on it, it triggers that multifamily low zoning district. When we hit multifamily medium, we hit the lofts, the district lofts there by the Heritage District, another great project, but that is a little more intense, quite a few more units. So that hit multifamily medium designation. And then for high, we've only really had a couple that have come in. Novel is being constructed right now at Valvista Square. So this is right next to Mountainside Fitness, Winco, the VA Hospital. It's being constructed right now. You can see the elevator towers up right now as we speak. So, so what's new in Gilbert? One thing that we always try to push out to residents and anytime we talk to groups is the what's developing nearby map. Folks can go in and they can see now everything from neighborhood meetings clear through construction. There used to be a little bit of a lag there. We fixed that lag. So a lot of people didn't see the yellow signs, didn't read the yellow signs, didn't care about the yellow signs. Then they saw sticks and they said, okay, what's going on? What's being built here on my corner? So now you can follow the project all the way through. Even if you see sticks, then you can back it up and you can see the building elevations. You can see the site plan. You have a really good idea of what's occurring in that area. Epicentown at Agratopia is coming along great, I believe. Patrick might have to help me. They're planning on starting some openings first quarter of next year, if I remember correctly. We've been able to tour it a couple times. The residential is headed with commercial, and I think they will actually have some folks living in there, maybe even before some of that commercial opens up. And it's a wide range of commercial. There's restaurants, there's retail, there's a good, a good cross section in there. Commerce Center at Power and 202, this is what I was talking about with the Trammell Crow Group that was building there just on the south side of Warner. Gilbert Spectrum, Building Number 5. So then, again, this is McQueen and Elliott, next to Northrop Grumman. Lot of activity that's occurring in that area as well. And then just to show the variety, we threw in one of the churches that's being built as well. Sun Valley Community Church, which I believe is at the northeast corner of Ocatillo and Lindsay. So it's at the very edge of the town, but it's, this is one of those sites that originally was a leftover commercial corner. And you started, there was pushes for a whole bunch of different things. Church came in and took it, and so is developing out that entire commercial corner. Just a few more projects that's been going in. You've probably seen the Alta Climbing Gym because it's next to the Public Safety Training Facility. Multifamily project there, just some other neat commercial projects that have been going on. Again, it's just a very small planning commission, I mean, you've already seen, you know, 18, 20 cases a month. So just a small sampling of what's going on. And that is really all I had as far as kind of walking through the land uses, letting you know where we're at and kind of how we compare to everybody around the valley. So I'll be happy to get you that other information and we'll get that out.
You're back up again.
I'm back up here. Going a little crazy. I've gone from shade and Streetsgate Master Plan to 5G to land use to a little all over the place. All right, all right, perfect. So this presentation is not an ask either. It's more just of an overview. Presentation on the implement, implications of House Bill 2365 and the subsequent FCC order that came out of that. We'll walk through these five items pretty quickly. I don't really have that many slides. But the first thing, as we start to talk about small cells and 5G, I think the first thing that's important is to kind of figure out what 5G is. And at a very high level, 5G is the fifth generation of technology for broadband cellular networks. Cell companies began deploying 5G just a few years ago. The 5G network is a cellular network, but it's divided into much smaller areas than the typical cell towers that we normally see cover. A small cell network consists of several small, low-powered antennas. These antennas don't reach as far, as I mentioned, as the larger towers, but they really help provide a coverage in that gap that's created. Because there's that gap and because there's more demand on these cellular networks from everybody using the phone for everything, there's gaps created and these small cells help fill that in. It is important to know that small cells are always connected by fiber optics and they're usually attached to existing infrastructure such as streetlights, light poles, things of that nature. So here you can just see a couple examples. We actually have a few that are constructed now in Gilbert. The closest one, I think, well, the one that I can think of right off the top of my head is right out by Winco on Pecos. There's one constructed there. But there are several going up, and I've got some stats here in a minute that'll tell you how many more we've got coming. But this is typically what they look like. The antenna is that little canister on top. And it's pretty interesting because in order to put that canister on top, you have to re-engineer the entire pole. And the town typically owns the streetlight poles, so we had to go through an engineering thing with whoever puts those poles up. So they engineer and put the poles up and we own them, but they end up paying for them because of that small cell on top. So House Bill 2365 was passed in 2017 and took effect in 2018. This bill grants wireless providers the ability to install those small cell facilities in the right-of-way or utility easements, and it preempts any zoning regulations. So even if we wanted to say you could only be along in certain zoned areas or certain things like that, we are not able to do it. The bill also established a shot clock whereby a permit is automatically approved after 60 days if we don't have some sort of action on the application. The bill limited the fees that we were able to charge. The good thing about it is the bill does allow us to regulate some of the aesthetics. So, I mean, you saw the pictures before. They're not the most beautiful thing, but they are way better than what we couldn't, could have gotten. And we have to regulate and treat these as we do every other utility that's in the right-of-way. So we can require separation from water lines or sewer lines or out-of-site triangles, but we can't do anything to a small cell that we would do to a Cox box or an SRP box or any of those types of utilities. The FCC order followed shortly thereafter. And the order was essentially the same as the House Bill, except on a federal level. So this gave essentially cell providers the opportunity to go into the right-of-way and public utility easements in every state. It did talk a little bit more about some fees, what reasonableness is, but we still have the ability to regulate aesthetics and the shot clock is still there as well. I will say that the town is very, or was very proactive in that time in working with not only cellular providers, but there were some professional organizations in place at the time and also other municipalities. As this House Bill and the FCC order went through, we worked very closely, well, I say we, Nikki worked very closely with them and Nancy to come up with the ordinance that the town passed. There was a very collaborative effort and it's one of those things where we understood kind of what we were behind, but they also knew that they had to play nice in order to move forward. So council passed ordinance 2631 in November of 2017 in response to the House Bill. So it adopted a standard set of terms and conditions for the sites. It established a site license agreement to tie each site to the terms, and it adopted our standards for encroachment of structures into the public right-of-way. And the standards are what I was referring to when I talked about aesthetics. So we essentially do site licenses with each of the, each one of the sites. And then we've got our aesthetics that we review everything to. And then Resolution 3934, which was passed, allows us to charge the fees. Now, the fees were pretty much capped by what was in the House Bill and the reasonableness charged. So we came up with fees that we thought we could, that were reasonable and that we could stand and we could approve, and those were what was approved with that resolution. Again, the providers have been very good with us in this process. We've worked with two main providers, AT&amp;T and Verizon, who we've seen the most of. But they are very good, again, knowing that they can kind of overrun us if they wanted to because of the House Bill and the order. They've still been very good to work with us. And that's important because some of these sites actually end up in front yards of residential houses. And so they know that they can go there, but at the same time, they know if they want to be good neighbors and they don't want to have a name associated with them, that they should probably work with us. And that's been very helpful because we've been able to get boxes into tracks or out of people's front yards. We've been able to move some of the cell sites around corners next to parks or the neighborhood parks or in the landscape tracks instead of directly in front of some people's houses. Not always, but sometimes. So the process that we follow, given the House Bill, given the order, given the ordinances, and it's a really slick process. The wireless carrier applies for a site request review. So they come in, it's no cost. This is when we sit down and we start going through it. Okay, how close is this to a water line? How close is this sewer line? What does this mean with our standards? Is there electricity in the area? I mean, we go through everything to see if there's any red flags. Is this site a go or a no-go? And we have some conversations with the carriers at that time. You know, again, is it in somebody's front yard? Is it in a site disability triangle? We have those conversations to see if we can't move some of these sites. I mentioned that these sites fill in gaps, so they can't go too far. So we can't take them from one end of a subdivision to another just because we don't like it. We might be able to move around the corner of that lot or something of that nature, but we typically can't move them too far. So they come in for their site request review. This is where AJ and Angelina deal with it. So we've got two folks in development engineering and Tom's group that handle the site request review. Once the site request review is complete, just that it's come in, we start, well, and then we do the, and the construction permitting fees, I'm sorry. Once the request is complete, they apply for their construction permitting. So once we know that it can go on that site in that location, it meets the separations, we're ready to move forward, they'll submit for their construction permit. At this point in time, then, we've got different folks in building, traffic, planning, engineering, addressing, and some others to take a look at the plan and will sign off on the construction documents. Once the plans are approved, then, the site license agreement is fully executed and construction permits are issued. The way it's set up currently, the site license agreement comes to me and I sign it with the representative from the carrier. The site then moves to construction and inspection. And once the construction is done and the inspections are finalized, the carrier puts it into play. And then here are some of the stats. So since this started, I mentioned we've been working predominantly with two carriers, but we've had 154 individual sites that have come in for us to review. The average time it takes us to go through them is about a week and a half. And today, 63 sites have been submitted for permitting. So of that 154, only 63 were able to move forward for some reason. And we've only issued 19 permits for construction. Yeah, like I mentioned, the remaining other sites were either waiting for resubmital or they didn't make the cut, or they're trying to find a different location for the site. In the last two weeks, so I don't know if you remember when this all started, but the fear was we were going to have an onslaught. We were having like 100 of these things come in at one point in time. That has since, that never really occurred, that bubble never really occurred. However, we're seeing more and more. In the last two weeks, we've seen 25 different sites. And the technology continues to change a little bit. You know, I mentioned they've got the streetlight and they put the cell tower on, or the cell canister on the top. Then they would have a meter and maybe the, some other ground equipment off into a landscape easement. It's starting to change a little bit. We're now everything's in those poles. So we're starting to see meters on poles, which now we have to step back. We have to go look at our standards. Is that going to work? We have to look at the engineering. So things have continued to change. But we have seen 25 in the last two weeks and we're working through them. So that is really it for the presentation. There's not much to it. Where if we're working closely with them, we understand the limitations. There's not a lot we can do. When we do get phone calls from residents or folks that are seeing some activity in the front yard, we walk them through the process and we let them know. One of the things I think council has heard a time or two is that the carriers are starting construction or they're installing fiber and the neighbors say we've never heard of anything. The contractors do go out and hang door tags prior to any construction occurring, and we always have folks on site that can answer questions. But it is a little bit of a shock is, you know, there's new construction or a potential cell, small cell site in your front yard. So there is some communication upfront, but it's not, there's not a lot. And we really don't have any way to force the cell companies to do that. That's not part of the House Bill. So again, we try to work with them and explain to the neighbors and communicate the best that we can. So that I'm happy to answer any questions about 5G or small cells.
Continuing on that theme of we don't have much control. Well, we're going to briefly go over group homes. We'll talk about what they are, federal, state laws involved. And then the town has, in the land development code, we do have some regulations, even though we're limited in what we can do. So first thing, what groups homes are, is a single housekeeping unit. And it's a place where people receive common care support. And we'll go through the next slide, talks about different types of group homes. In Arizona, and that's what disability includes, that's the other thing, is it's a very broad definition. That's why you see so many different types of group homes. People with physical disabilities, mental disabilities, addictions, physical injuries, all the different types of things that go there. In Arizona, it's licensed by DHS. And then at times, the Department of Economic Security and the Department of Child Safety also have some involvement. So these are different types of group homes that are out there. There probably are other types. But these are the types that we're seeing in Gilbert and around the valley. So there's a couple of federal laws. There's actually more than this. But these are the two main federal laws that really preempt much of what any city or town or county can do. First one is the Federal Housing Act, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of housing. And American with Disabilities Act, where a local is required to reasonably accommodate by modifying the building's policies, practices, and procedures. There's a lot more to this. These statutes are pages and pages long, but these are the main points for the purpose of regulating group homes. So this is where you get into some of the definitions. A disabled person under the ADA and the FDA or FHA for purposes of group homes is someone who has a physical or mental impairment that impairs some type of major life activity. There's a record of that, so there's some type of diagnosis and their regard of having an impairment. And a couple of other points I wanted to make, that addiction is considered a disability where substantially limits a major life activity. That way you could see a recovery. That way you could see a recovery home for alcoholics or drug addicts. Those are group homes that are protected under this. They can go into neighborhoods under, under the FHA, ADA as well as Arizona Fair Housing Act. And the point I want to make on the bottom is that cities are prohibited from making zoning land use decisions that exclude or otherwise discriminate against individuals with disabilities. Meaning if you've got a group home that wants to go into a neighborhood, they have a right to be there and cities cannot prohibit them just because there's going to be a home with unrelated people living in a single family neighborhood. So the state law, Arizona has a law that's based on the Federal Housing Act. It's got some, some of the similar provisions. Again, prohibits discrimination of sale renter or rental or just the fact that somebody's living home, there's no discrimination permitted. And that's the point at the bottom. It applies to a person residing in or attending to reside in a dwelling unit. And that way we have a group home operator comes into Gilbert, they want to, they want to buy, buy a parcel. They want to buy an existing home and put a group home in there. The town is prohibited from saying, hey, no, you're going to have, you know, five people in there unrelated. It's going to have an impact on, on the neighborhood. We're prohibited from doing that. So this is the last slide. Gilbert has a role in regulating group homes, but it's very limited. This is based in the land development code. Some of these we can absolutely enforce and others it's gray and we have to make reasonable accommodations when asked. So the first one is this twelve hundred foot separation. That's in the code, that's a requirement. And when a, and Kyle, if I get something wrong, please correct me on this. But if a, a group home operator wants to come into a neighborhood, they'll meet with planning. They'll look at a map, we know where the group homes are and we'll, 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 we'll try to hold them to the twelve hundred foot spacing requirement. But if they want to get inside that twelve hundred square foot and get closer, then they can make a request for reasonable accommodation unless we can articulate some, some solid reason why that's not permissible or would not be allowed or would not be in the public's interest. We have to allow it. At the end of the day, it's a hard, it's a hard ask or hard, something that's difficult to show. So why, a lot of them are twelve hundred foot, at least there's some that are not, and there's not much we can do about that.
What's the separation from?
From another group home, yeah, from another group home. The idea obviously is you don't want a neighborhood where it's a full street full of group homes. You get a lot more activity, a lot more people coming in. The occupancy doesn't exceed five residents unless DHS says they can. No exterior signs, that's something we can hold to. Compliance to town park and building fire safety, that's something we can hold to as well. Obviously state licensing requirements, they have to be licensed typically by DHS. I've got an asterisk on the prohibition on, we have a provision in there that says that those who impose a danger to the community are prohibited from residing in a group home. There's not much we can do about that. It's, it's in the code, but we can't enforce it because we don't know who's in the group homes. We don't get a list, we're prohibited from asking. So why, that language is in the code, it's really unenforceable because we don't know who's there. We don't know if it's, if it's, you know, someone who's got some type of mental disability or someone who's got a dangerous background, we, we can't, we don't know who it is and there's no way.
Take it out then because the public says you're responsible for this incident we just had.
Yeah, no, and that's, that's exactly right.
Didn't enforce our code.
Yeah, no, they point to that and say that and it's, it's, it's a tough conversation saying, yeah, I know it's in the code, but we can't enforce it because we don't know who's there. I think the benefit of, and if anyone was here when it was brought in, please speak to it. It seems like maybe it was put in to hopefully, hopefully show the operators when they come in, hey, this is a requirement. Maybe they'll make that a consideration with the type of group home they come in or maybe this particular residence that they bring into Gilbert. We hope they would look at that, but at the end of the day, to your point, residents see that and think we can do something. And, and the answer is we cannot when it comes to who the residents are.
Maybe it's just a choice of words. So prohibition on something is something that we would need to enforce, but maybe if we make it a, we kind of say a requirement, but a recommendation to the owners that they not bring someone else that in that would pose a danger to the community. But they don't know either in most cases.
They may or may not, right? Depends on the home and their residents do come in and out. The last point, just the last thing we want to make is can't really see it at the bottom, but we do coordinate with the state regulatory agencies when issues supposed to say arise. The most recently with DHS, with the issue that, that happened here in Gilbert at the group home. But there, there have been some, some procedures and practices put in place to help coordinate better and communicate better with DHS. And chief, I think, are you guys up and running on, on the reporting? I know that's something you're looking at. Okay, so PD and fire keep track of the number of calls that are going out to group homes and where they will provide, I think the idea is to provide a, a report to DHS. If we see problem homes where they're getting a lot of calls, letting them know they're the regulatory agency, they're the ones, they have some, they, they license these agencies, but even DHS is subject to the federal, the Fair Housing Act as well as the ADA. So their hands are tied partially. They can't just go out and revoke a license just on its own. They've got, they've got a lot of steps that they've got to go through. But, but the idea with that is letting DHS know who we think the bad operators are potentially, putting that on their radar since they are the licensing entities. Okay. Oh, perfect.
Initially, in all of the discussions, when it came down to the group home coverage that Chris was referencing to, and it was initially placed as a guidance for the operators and putting them on notice to go ahead and have sufficient staffing to go ahead and monitor who was in the group home at all times. So it was, it was a cap placed in the code as guidance for the operators.
Thank you, Lori. So that's it, any questions?
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Jordan Posano. I work in the tax compliance division and give you guys an update on short term rentals, a project we've been working on for a lot longer than we had planned, thanks to two thousand twenty. Just a quick overview of what we're going to go over. The most important thing, well, one of the most important things, we're going to define what a short term rental is, just so we're all on the same page moving forward. And this is pulled out of statute, the what we use for taxes. It's not going to be, some of the HOAs have different definitions, but we're going to use the one that's in statute. We're going to talk about HOAs and what they're doing in the town of Gilbert for short term rentals and kind of where they need us to come alongside them. We'll talk about legislation that was passed back in two thousand nineteen. The group that was put together to work through that legislation that was passed and come up with these four options here we'll get into. The impacts in Gilbert is really the quantity of short term rentals in Gilbert, how many we have in the town. These incidents and complaints is kind of the quality of those rentals. How many issues have we had with them? If any, what does that look like overall, over a two year period? The whole point of the presentation is these four options. We're just asking for a recommendation from council on where to go next with this. We put together the four areas we can take it after that legislation was signed. And we just want to know where you guys would like us to proceed next. I can't get out of here without talking about tax implications. My boss is over there, she'll lock me out of the building tomorrow if I don't. And then we'll touch on what our neighboring municipalities have done as well in the area. So most importantly, we're going to define short term rentals. It is any property rented out by the owner for twenty nine days or less per period. Not per month, not for six months, not for the year, per period. So if we do November first to November twenty ninth, that's a short term rental. If another one starts on the thirtieth, goes for twenty nine days after that, it's also a short term rental. Soon as they hit that thirtieth day, it's a residential rental, specifically talking about residential houses. If we're talking about hotels, they, they get a little more wonky, but for this short term rental, it's twenty nine days or less per period. I'm sure most of you know this, most of these in the ninetieth percentile of these short term rentals are listed on online lodging marketplaces. That's our Airbnbs, our Verbos, HomeAway, there's like fifty of them now. Don't have to list on those, but most of them are listed on those. And that's important as we get into the tax portion later on. So we wanted to talk about HOAs first before we got into what Gilbert was looking at. The HOAs we looked at, we reached out to twenty six different HOAs all within Gilbert to see what kind of provisions they had for short term rentals in their CCNRs. As you can see, thirteen of them had something in there limiting those short term rentals. But when we brought that back to the team, we found out from code compliance and legal that these HOAs, these thirteen, don't want to enact that. They're a little nervous to enforce that because it might get tied up in a lawsuit. So they reach out to us and say, hey, what are you guys doing? How can we come along together and, and handle this together? These twelve, this, this one year, we didn't get a chance to see their CCNRs. But these twelve don't have anything in their CCNRs. And for the same reasons, they don't want to add anything. Once somebody's already living under those CCNRs, it's very hard to get it passed. They're afraid of infringing on property rights. So they don't want to pass anything to limit short term rentals in their HOA. So both sides of this reached out to the town through code compliance, through the town's legal department and asked, what is the town going to do? Where can we go from this? How can we handle this together? Before I go into the next one, back in December of two thousand sixteen, can't even remember that, it's long ago, but back then, council did pass at the time language in our land development code that required a registration for short term rentals. Unfortunately, it was just the language at the time that was implemented. We didn't implement any sort of process. We didn't build a database for short term rentals. We didn't work through how to handle incidents or complaints. And that was because it was a kind of a gray cloud over everything at the time. We weren't sure what legislation was coming. We knew some was coming, we just didn't know exactly what it was or how it was going to change or what it was going to allow. They just said it about group homes. Same thing with this, at the time, we couldn't treat short term rentals any differently than a, a regular residential rental house. So the language was there, but we couldn't really do anything with it until with me, Elena. Until two thousand nineteen, when HB twenty six seventy two was signed by Governor Ducey. This did three things for us, for the towns. The first is that it gave us the ability to collect contact information from short term rental property owners. Okay, that could be the owner's information or the owner could designate somebody, anybody that we could contact twenty four seven by phone, through email or face to face to handle an issue at a short term rental. Previous to that, we couldn't actually do that, even though it was in our code. We had the language, we didn't build it out because we were waiting for that to be in statute. It also provided us with the option to hold the owners accountable for issues occurring at their rental property. So if they're renting it out and they're continually having issues there, we can now hold the owner accountable for those issues, not just the renters who are changing every week. The third thing it did is it established this civil penalty structure and the reporting requirements. So there's a lot here. Most importantly, verified violation just means it was adjudicated. They were, they were cited for an incident, a renter was cited for an incident. That worked all the way through the court process and was adjudicated. And now we can hold the owner accountable for a five hundred dollar civil penalty fee for the first violation. For the second, it's a thousand dollars for the third, fifteen hundred or fifty percent of the income in which the incident occurred. So if it was November twenty twenty one, we can get them for fifty percent of their income. Not we, the department of revenue. These violations are tracked on a rolling twelve month calendar. So if issue one is November twenty twenty one, it's a five hundred dollar fine to the owner once adjudicated. Issue two, let's say June twenty twenty two, that would be a one thousand dollar fine. Issue three was December of twenty twenty two, that's still the second violation because the first one is dropped off the rolling calendar now. Okay, so it's real, real wonky the way they set it up on us. These are the max fines that will be issued. So if we, and we're going to talk later about our possibility of enacting an ordinance or passing an ordinance to set fines in our code. If we set it at two fifty for the first one, the department of revenue is going to issue a two hundred and fifty dollar fine to make it match, to make it five hundred. We issue zero, they're going to issue five hundred. If we issue five hundred, they're going to issue zero. Okay, anytime the department, most of the time with taxes, they collect for us, they remit it back to us. This fine, they keep. Anything they bill for this, they're going to keep. It doesn't come back to us like a regular tax law. Okay? So this came out, we got word from council back in two thousand nineteen, say, hey, let's put together a team to look into the complexities of this bill. It's kind of crazy. It's got this civil penalty structure, it's got all these owner designate, you got to call them within seven days, within thirty days. We started researching it. We started with, and I just want to call out all the different teams involved in this. We started with code compliance, intergov, tax compliance and legal with the first four to get together and have a meeting. We quickly realized we needed to reach out to organizational development and have their lean innovator help us because we were going to get really confused really fast. After that, we added in courts, digital, fire, IT, planning, police, prosecutor's, prosecutor's office and the town manager's office. So it became a giant project with a lot of different people involved to develop those four options. While we were doing this initial research, we heard that there were three short term rental bills introduced in the two thousand twenty legislative session that were going to potentially change what we were working on. So we kind of put a halt on our process. We had drawn it all the way out. We had laid out what it could look like, put a hold on, and then COVID nineteen hit and put a real hold on everything. So we waited to see if those were going to come back due, due to some changes at the legislative level. They didn't get reintroduced in two thousand twenty one. So we decided to resume meeting, conduct more in-depth research and prepare this presentation for council retreat. The first part of that research was the quantity of short term rentals in Gilbert in the past, right now and in the future. We actually reached out to three different software vendors that specialize in short term rental compliance. They come alongside different municipalities and they help us find all the rentals, get them registered, be able to track any incidents that occur there and, and anything. They build up a database, build out a process, anything that we would need, they could help us with. One of them was called Granicus. They gave us this map. This is a current map of two thousand twenty one and it shows there are six hundred units currently available here. They also showed, told us that in two thousand sixteen, we had about three hundred and fifty here in the town of Gilbert. This map's awesome, I love it, but it's just a picture. Unfortunately, it's not interactive. It doesn't give us owner information, doesn't give us address information. It's not to scale, otherwise these are massive houses. So it can be interactive if we partner with them. Then you'd be able to click on this, you'd be able to see it's listed on Airbnb. You'd see how they verify that, who the owner is, what the address is of that property. Okay, we also looked at a company called AirDNA and they predict a fifteen percent year over year increase in short term rental listings, which would get us to about eight hundred in two thousand twenty three. Unless that event that you guys heard about earlier really takes off, then we might need more short term rentals. So just throwing that out. So that's the quantity. We looked at the quality of our short term rentals as well. We did this in two parts. We talked to police and then we talked to the other departments, which was tax compliance and code compliance that would hear from short term rentals. We did it over a two year period. Please note that fifteen months of this were during the pandemic, which hit short term rentals either didn't at all and they all flourished or crushed them. So it was kind of a mixed bag. So some of this data might be a little different than what it would have looked like under a normal two year period. Police had seventy incidents recorded where just a phone call occurred involving a short term rental. Like I said earlier, we don't have a process for collecting that data. So it was just the phone calls where it was explicitly stated that I'm at a short term rental and this is going up. You can see here, seven of these seventy resulted in charges being filed. Those would be the ones that we would follow through the court process to adjudication to determine if the owner was liable for a fine. We didn't get a chance to track all that and look through that. I do know two of these would not have resulted in a fine for the owner because the renters were actually victims of theft at that time. A car was broken into, something was stolen off the porch. So we're not going to charge, we're not going to ding the owner for the renter being a victim of a crime. Okay, so two of those wouldn't have actually affected that fee that we looked at early. We had approximately twenty other conversations, complaints with tax compliance and code compliance, just from different residents. But a caveat with this data, it doesn't include anything that town manager's office has heard and it doesn't include anything that council has heard. And I know you guys have heard some. So that is the quality, so to speak, of our short term rentals over the last two years with those caveats in the data for Gilbert. Taking all that in together, all that together, HB twenty six seventy two, how many we have. Taking all that in together, all that together, HB 2672, how many we have in the town, what they look like in terms of quality, we developed four different options that we could go following HB 2672. We're going to go into each of these, but I want to touch on this real quick. Each of these options would likely require an outreach and education campaign. It seems the feedback we've got is that our residents don't have a place or don't know how we handle short-term rentals. It's not on our website anywhere, so we'd like to add a, a page there. And they don't know where to file complaints. They don't know where to go to be heard. Okay, so anytime we can alleviate that, that frustration for them and give them a place to go, we'd like to do that obviously, and then maybe they won't call four different departments. They'll just go to the one spot and we can handle it appropriately. We did talk to digital about both of these top ones. They're ready to go with issuing any sort of campaign, hosting any sort of education, helping us with anything we need. As soon as we give them the information, they were ready to go. They're also ready to help us build out an internet page, show, discussing all things short-term rental with the town. And we talked to IT about possibly setting up an email inbox just for short-term rentals and they were ready to go with that too. So we can do all of this fairly quickly. It just depends on what it's going to look like with this option that we choose. Okay, so option one is to have no registration. So I said earlier, we do have language in the land development code that requires a registration. We would have to remove that. And then we would establish protocols, clean up that, those issues with the key stakeholders, tax compliance, code compliance, police, where we can track complaints and incidents at these short-term rentals and then just kind of monitor, monitor them for a two-year period. Is this getting out of hand? Is it staying? Is it going down? Are they, are they real issues or is it just a frustrated neighbor? Where, where do we go with this? And we could bring it back every six months, we could bring it back every two years, whatever council would want. This option often gets called the do nothing option, but that's not what I'm saying. We're not going to do nothing and, and move away from short-term rentals. We're just going to try and track them and see if it's a real issue, given the last two years of data is really skewed from COVID-19 and from not having anything set in place. Okay? The second option, this is where we're at now, right? We have a required registration in our code and we're not issuing penalties at the local level, obviously. So this would be, we would likely partner with one of those software vendors I mentioned and build out a registration, build out a database to house all the, the short-term rental owner information. And then if, if they file a complaint, the proper town department will work with them, work with both the person that complained and the one they're complaining about and get that issue settled. Okay, if a violation occurs, then we would track it through the court process. If it's adjudicated, we just let the department of revenue know. We had a verified violation occur at this property on this date and they'll issue the fine at that time. Okay? Option three is a voluntary registration. So this one's a little different. We're not, it's kind of the way we've handled it, even though our code says required, we've handled it on a case-by-case basis. When an issue arises at a short-term rental, we work with them, we get them registered and then we make sure nothing else is occurring at that property moving forward. Okay, we kind of do the same thing here. We would definitely reach out to all the rentals. We could do, a, a software vendor can do just a clean sweep and give us that data one time. And then we can reach out to all them, all the short-term rental owners and let them know where we're going. It's just going to be voluntary and a case-by-case basis. If an incident occurs or a violation, then we would take appropriate action to work with that owner to resolve that issue. Okay? And then the last option is to keep, again, it's up here, it says mandatory. Keep the mandatory registration, but also add civil penalties. So this is at the local level. So this is a lot like option two, but we would pass an ordinance implementing a fine, a fee schedule into our own code so that when a violation is adjudicated, is verified, we would then issue our portion of the fine, whatever that looks like. If it's 500, DOR won't issue anything. If it's 250, they'll issue their part. Okay? So again, those are the four options we have. Those are what we came up with as a team. We can, just to determine how we're going to handle short-term rentals here in the town of Gilbert. And we just wanted, just came here to ask for guidance on which one council would like us to proceed with. Like I said, I have to touch on tax implications. It usually comes up anyway with short-term rentals. So three big things, the reporting of short-term rentals. They're always combined under hotel motel, which shows up under the accommodation line. If you guys ever see any reports from us, that's what, that's where they go. If they're filing under a online lodging marketplace or if they're filing on their own, it doesn't matter. They both combine under the hotel motel tab. Okay? The taxability, this me, this more means our ability to collect tax from short-term rentals. Okay, so like I said, upwards of, in the 90th percentile of these short-term rentals lists on an online lodging marketplace, when they do that, per statute, the OLM, the online lodging marketplace, is required to file and pay taxes for them on their behalf. So it wouldn't change, you know, the, the thought process is once we build a registration, then we can go and check each of those addresses to make sure we're collecting the proper tax revenue. That's not necessarily true because when an online lodging marketplace files, they just have to put one line. Gilbert, this gross income, this deduction, this net taxable and this amount due. They don't, otherwise they would have 500 lines on their tax return. Okay, so building out a registration doesn't necessarily mean we have more access to, to our tax revenue. The other thing is this tax data, for those that aren't on a, the online lodging marketplace that are, that are filing or that are listing on their own, their property, tax data, one, isn't always the most accurate. And two, the person you have filing your tax returns, like we have CPA, isn't going to be the person that you want as the owner's designee to deal with an issue at the short-term rental. Okay, your CPA could be in Colorado. You don't necessarily want them to be the person we call after you when an incident occurs. So we need two different sets. If we want a registration, we have to build it out separately. It can't be tied into the tax data. Okay? The last thing we looked at was our neighboring municipalities. We tried to pick the ones most comparable to us to see what they had done. You can see Chandler did everything. They, they set up a process, they worked with the vendor, they passed an ordinance. I think that's about 30% of the short-term rentals they have in the city that are registered now. Scottsdale didn't use an outside vendor. They have one full-time position working on that right now. And then Tempe did everything, Paradise Valley did everything. And you can see these cities opted to do nothing and just monitor going forward. Okay? Any questions for me or any of the experts in the room?